40423 declarations of any disclosable junior interest. And showing, are any, we can make note of them at the start of that item. So 40523 apologies for absence. Okay, so 40623, the minutes of the council meeting held on 26th of September 2023. Are councillors happy that they record a true record of the meetings held and to sign them? Minutes, agreed, thank you. Onto the committee meeting minutes, 40723, first item is the amenities committee of the 3rd of October. It's Jeremy to present.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, very happy to move the minutes from amenities held on the 3rd of October. There's a couple of recommendations. First one is 381 stroke 23, which is to review and adopt the new committee terms of reference. So recommendation for council.
So got with councillor Harvey to propose and councillor Brindle seconded that at the committee level. They have to do so for council.
Yep.
Those in favour?
Yep.
Against? Kerry, thank you.
And actually, I think that was the only recommendation, so move the minutes.
Thank you. So on to the planning committee of the 10th of October. Myself in the chair. As ever, there's very few recommendations coming forward from this committee. It's all resolved business. So those that are present, are they happy? Oh, sorry, I've got a recommendation that we did have our committees terms of references to be approved at that for council. So can I have a proposer and a seconder for that, please? That's Brindle to propose. And councillor McDonald to second. All those in favour? Or against? No. Move the minutes, thank you. Onto the allotments of the 12th of October.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the minutes, the allotment committee on the 12th of October, please. Two pages and everything, which resolved, there's no recommendation.
To move the minutes.
Would you like me to repeat that? Okay, I'd like to move the minutes in allotment committee held on the 12th of October. There are no recommendations, just some resolved issues. Pages, it's two pages. Okay?
Happy to.
Did you hear that?
Means that the minutes are a true record and there was no recommendations that require full council agreement. Happy to move those minutes. Agreed, thank you. To the finance and personnel committee of the 17th of October, councillor Jeremy to present.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, these are the finance and personnel committee meeting minutes from the 17th of October. There is a recommendation on page one, which is that full council approve revised committee terms of reference attached as appendix A to the minutes.
Happy for that, do we need that? I think it was the councillor Blackborne and councillor Harvey seconded that. Happy, yeah, but. Those in favour?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you, there is a second recommendation at the bottom of page three, item 384. I'd like to propose, Mr Mayor, that we defer consideration of that recommendation until next month's meeting, please.
Councillors happy for that recommendation to be deferred? Those in favour of the deferral?
Thank you, there will be no further recommendations, I move the minutes.
Onto the heritage events of 18th of October, councillor Brindle to present.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I'd like to recommend to the heritage events committee's minutes, unconfirmed minutes of the 18th of October. And I think there are two recommendations. The first is on item 394, that the committee's terms of reference be recommended to full council, I think you've heard that before this evening.
So we have councillor Mitchell proposing, councillor Terry seconding, all those in favour? Kerry, thank you.
Thank you, and the second is item 399, that the budget for next year be recommended to the finance and personnel committee.
Thanks, so we've got councillor Terry proposed, councillor Heatham seconded, all those in favour? Thank you.
I recommend them, it's you.
Thank you. Onto 40823, mayor's remark and report. Mark and Port, it's a quite a busy September, October period, I think the highlight was going to Westminster Abbey to see our new Bishop of Thetford installed. I have spoken to him on a couple of occasions and he wants to be more involved in Thetford, which was great. He's hoping to come to preach at the Mayor's Carol Service on the 8th of December. And he's looked to come to visit, have a tour around Thetford in due course. We had the Thetford Town Football Club lunch, which is particularly pleasing to see nearly 100 people attend that. And representatives from the rugby club, the cricket club and other groups within the town. And it's lovely to see that, you know, the groups are networking together and can share experiences. And hopefully we're able to give a lot more support to each other as a community as a result of that networking. And obviously over the weekend, I laid the wreath for to mark the 130th anniversary of Judith Singh's death. It was well attended, we did host the teas and coffees back here in the Carney. Unfortunately, a power cut meant we had to run a couple of extension leads, but might do amend. It went off and thanks to the town council staff to adapting to the situation, but the Sikhs were pleased to have it there. So councillor Harvey, did you wish to comment upon your attendance?
Just a couple, it was a great pleasure to go with the Thetford Scouts with their donation to the food bank on the 7th of September. It was really good to see the young children taking part. And then again, with more of our young children and young adults at the Trafalgar Day Parade in Bury St Edmunds. It was really, really good to see the Scouts marching round, the music going, it was a good day and I made some good contacts as well.
Okay, so we move on then to 40923, town council representatives on other bodies, just go around the table if anybody. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Chair, just the safety Thetford Action Group, the usual update. I'm delighted, first of all, to see that what's said in this forum is actually transferred to other forums, to other people do mention what is said in here. And I know it was discussed through the town, particularly about the Safe Thetford Action Group. I'm also slightly delighted in the fact that the Public Space Protection Order consultation actually got more this year than any other year. It's still not brilliant, it's a really low turnout. And this is the case with everything that happens in society now. People aren't as engaged in getting involved, but fingers crossed that that will come to fruition. At our recent closed meetings for STAG, we found, like every other voluntary organisation, it's really difficult to get people to turn up to them. And for this reason and police participation reasons, we've taken the decision to close our meetings to just one every other month. And this is because it simply isn't sustainable to ask all those key investors, what they work with children and drugs and all the rest of it, to keep coming to those hour long meetings. And so unfortunately, that's a sign of the times. But what we can't do, physically, we can do virtually. And for everybody's information, the next open public meeting is in the Guildhall and that will be on Thursday, the 11th of January at 7pm. Thank you, Chair.
Then table any further representatives on other bodies. Okay, thank you, move on to 41023, what's some county and district councillors, I'm sure, around the table.
Shall I come?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones for me, we had some, a good result on Breton fixing the flint wall along the Berry Road. Unfortunately, there are two more holes appearing, but I've reported that. Also, on a slightly separate note, I had a really great morning yesterday, going round with Matt at the war graves in Thetford Cemetery. It was educational, it was really mind blowing to see the way the war graves are treated with not only British, Indian, Polish, no end of other, you know, European people who put their lives in the war and after. It was an interesting thing to learn that lots of people, nearly as many people died from Spanish flu. Is that correct, that they did from that, the injuries received in the war? The fact that we had an awful lot of Thetford people who actually gave their lives should make us all proud and honour, I think.
Kerry? Just one thing, please. Very good, I think it's actually quite. It's not a public forum now. We are in a closed session in terms of speaking, so there's no inter, people, members of the public to ask questions at this stage. Councillor Terry, please.
Just one thing, I'm really keen supporter of grassroots sport within the town. And I was delighted to sponsor Thetford Town in their last home game against Fakenham, which said Julie 121. The importance of grassroots sport within the town is that the whole town should really try and get behind the cricket club, the football club, the hockey club, the netball club. And really support these guys because it's all voluntary, it's not much, not much income and, you know, it gets people out and about.
The Breton councillors, councillor Anne?
Yeah, as a town councillor, this is not Breton, yeah?
Well, this is the reports from county and district councillors.
So we, last Monday, we took a group of residents over to overview and scrutiny at Breckland, residents from the Abbey Estate. A couple of them were very kindly allowed to speak by the leader of Breckland Council. They spoke very well and we got a good response from Breckland regarding the regeneration. So that was a, that was a very valuable morning.
I've got to jump to councillor James for Norfolk report as I come down the table.
Good evening, Teeth Thetford. So Norfolk County Council's budget consultation opened on 20th of October and that runs through, apologies, I'm doing the customised this at the moment. That runs through until the 1st of December this year. It's been promoted in various ways and residents can feedback that use on the proposed counter tax level for the year 2024-25. Which includes proposal for the adult social care reset. There are online forms available, but there are also paper versions. You can download them, they'll be available at our libraries as well. And you can also send your views into counter form using a free post event address, which I'll pass on to the clerk to distribute, should you require it. Really pleased to note that on the 13th of October, the government approved the outline business case for Norfolk County Council's Norwich Western League project. For a new 3.9 miles dual carriageway road to be built in the western Norwich, which will connect the Broadway Northway, which some of you might know as the Northern Distributor Road. Between the A1067 and the A157 West. Once built, that's going to reduce journey times, improve road safety, support economic development and reduce congestion on our roads. And actually make a difference to those residents that are fed up with traffic jams outside their houses. And if you ever tried to get to Dinosaur Park, you'll know exactly what I mean. The working well, the employment programme was launched in the middle of this month as well. The schemes to help local residents with long term health conditions or physical impairments to get into work and stay in work. It's a 2.7 million pound scheme funded through Department for Work pensions. That's managed by Norfolk County Council and that's going to be run by a delivery partner, a seat take bus and sale and now permitted. There's a variety of referral methods, including self referral. And again, I'll make sure that those details can be circulated to you guys for Irene out with publication numbers. Finally, there are grants available for community tree projects via the partnership between Norfolk County Council and buses. Applications must be for planting trees that provide tangible community benefit and details are available on the county council website. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. So coming down the table, any further district councillors? Should we speak? No. Councillor Jeremy, both district and county.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Like many councillors, I'm sure we've all seen an increase in the number of people struggling with the cost of living crisis over the last few months. I know a number of people around the table have been issuing food bank vouchers and fuel bank vouchers. And there's a significant demand out there at the moment. And obviously with the colder months approaching, people will be spending increasing amounts on their gas and electric bills. I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind people that Breckland Council do provide a local council tax support scheme specifically to support people with their council tax. After your mortgage or your rent, council tax will be fairly high up there in terms of significant bills to pay. It's one of those things where if you don't know it's there, it can be easily missed. And I've had a chap I've been helping the last few weeks, who was completely oblivious to the fact that his council tax bill could be supported by the council. He was entirely eligible and for this financial year, we managed to save him £950 on his council tax bill. Which obviously is a huge sum of money to support him. So do reach out to Breckland Council if you need help with local council tax support scheme, do reach out to individual councillors. In the case of this particular guy, he didn't have a computer, the application process was online and I was able to sit down and fill that in with. In addition to that, Norfolk County Council provide a Norfolk assistance scheme, which could be support with utility bills, council tax or food. So there is, there is help out there is kind of the message that I'm wanting to get across. So do reach out to the councils, but also do liaise with your councillors. And I know between a lot of us, we have been talking and liaising with each other and supporting people across different walls. Because, you know, councillor Blackburn is a somebody, you know, historically involved in Citizens Advice Bureau, got lots of very specific knowledge. Or those of us that have been councillors for a while have knowledge. So we are working collectively as councillors to try and support people. Like councillor Land, I was pleased to go over to Deirham last week with a group of Abbey residents about the regeneration project. And I thought we had a really fair reception from them. They listened intently to the concerns of councillors, but also of members of the community. We're talking about potentially 300 people, 300 homes, with, you know, probably up to 1000 people being compulsory. And there are a lot of concerns about people being forced from their house and an extra 500 homes added to the Abbey. And so understandably, there's a lot of concerns. The leader of Breckland has pledged to come out and meet with residents and talk that through. We are actively working now with residents and flagship housing. We have a second residence meeting scheduled for this Thursday evening. We had 25 at the last meeting and there's been publicity in the EDP. And it will feature on Radio Norfolk later this week, they've been out to interview residents yesterday, I think it was. So we are certainly raising those concerns and trying our best to support residents and get a better, better outcome. One of the committees I sit on at Norfolk County Council is the Audit Committee. As you might expect, it reviews and carries out a number of different audits of county council services. And at our most recent meeting, we reviewed a long list of all of the audits coming up for this financial year. I noticed on that list that they were going to be looking at the hospital discharge process. And I was able to make the point that for us here in Thetford, where an awful lot of our health services are provided by West Suffolk Hospital. The discharge process actually is a lot more cumbersome coming back into Norfolk Adult Social Care. And I, I've certainly had a number of cases where the two different areas don't seem to talk to each other very well. I made that point at the Audit Committee meeting and as part of their audit process, they are going to look at the interactions between Norfolk Adult Social Care and West Suffolk Hospital. And I'm sure it's the case all the way along the sort of border communities where they have, health doesn't quite work on county council boundaries. The reason I say that is because if anyone's had any examples of difficulties with the discharge service from Bury St Edmunds, West Suffolk Hospital back into Thetford, do let me know. And I'll make the links with the Audit Team at County. Massive challenges in the health service at the moment. And if the audit process can identify how some of that can be improved and working better, I think that's a good thing. You would have seen in various parts of Thetford, we've had roads resurfaced over the last few months. Not always to a standard that we might all like, maybe in diplomatic. But in the case of Stanley Fourth Road in Queensway, the resurfacing work there was done to a very poor standard, in my humble opinion. And there was very little clear up afterwards, there was a significant amount of chippings all over the road, all over the pavements. And Norfolk County Council have been out again, after I made a request and swept it this week with the sweeper, last week actually. And because of the number of cars on the road, they are going to write to residents of Queensway and Stanley Fourth and ask them to move their car at a specified time to allow the sweeper to, to get, to get back in there. If there are other roads in Thetford where there are issues, do let me know if it's on Thetford West, I'm sure similar for Jay. And I think there's been some resurfacing down at Woodlands estate. They are supposed to, when they do the resurfacing work, they are supposed to come out and sweep the roads after and sweep those loose chippings up. And it's very frustrating when they're not, so that's encouraging. Minster Gate Underpass, continue to get an awful lot of residents, particularly from Abbey Gate, contact me about Minster Gate Underpass. Continuing to put pressure on Breckland Council to make sure that that is cleaned on a regular basis. Very grateful to Thetford Town Council staff for starting the first of their monthly cleans. It's not a town council responsibility to clean underpasses, it's a Breckland Council responsibility. But our staff now have a licence to do that work, they did the first clean about two weeks ago and I'm really pleased to see that working well. There will be further work done to address the challenges around drainage and graffiti. And the pictures that are in the underpass are going to either be removed or tidied up in due course. But that is a very popular route into town or to the priory and it's important that we address the issues there. Lastly, there's a number of very good community litter picks across Thetford. There's a regular Mack and Teen Champion on Norwich Road estate, there's one on the Cloverfield estate. The two that I support each month that are in the area that I represent, Borough Ward Litter Picks on the second Saturday of the month and led by councillor Harvey. And the Priory Ward Litter Pick, myself, Mike and Terry Land, that's on the second Sunday. So if you're ever bored on the second weekend of the month, both start at 10 o'clock. It was the 11th and 12th of November are the next ones, meeting a Charles Murray Centre on the Saturday, Abbey Community Centre on the Sunday. But a later time of 2 o'clock, so I'll see if I remember Sunday, on that particular Sunday. Do come along, it's lovely to see residents attend and support and actually have a chat with us councillors on the way around about issues that matter to them. It's a good exercise and a chance to be in the fresh air and doing something positive to support the town. So wherever you are in town, we've got four at least, community litter picks every single month, do support them if you can. Thank you.
Councillor Harvey.
Sorry about this, Terry, don't. I'm going to spring you down this, I'm afraid. Norfolk County Council can we persuade them to get more proactive, the reactive over the flooding? Everyone knew we'd had bad weather coming, why didn't they come out and clean the drains and the gullies before this happened? Flagship received 300 calls on Friday, Saturday, the shops on St Martin's Way were inundated, several houses. Charlie, it's not rocket science, the weather was going to be bad, it was forecast bad, they've known for weeks. So why couldn't they come out and clean the drains and the gullies before this happened?
Yeah, and as you may be aware, there is now a Norfolk Strategic Flood Alliance, which county and all the districts are involved in. And the chap that heads up the Norfolk Flood Alliance, Henry Keater, was actually on the news last night talking about flooding. And it is one of their very clear recommendations that councils have got to do more proactive maintenance in, you know, gullies and drains. And also actually in, you know, privately owned ditches and watercourses around the county. Because obviously, if, as you say, we're not dealing with those issues, it does exacerbate the flooding and make it worse. So I completely agree with you, it's always a challenge about money, big challenges at county around financial sustainability and budgets. Adult social care continues to be a challenge and I do feel sorry for the highway service sometimes that, you know, they are seen as an easy target for, for cuts. But the proactive maintenance, if we don't do it, the clear up costs can be significant. So I've heard your point and I'm sure councillor James has as well. I'm sure we would agree with you that proactive maintenance is important.
Right, moving on then to.
Why are we not talking about how council tax is unlawful?
Because this is the council business that the members of the public have the open foot.
Why are we not informing that it is unlawful? Why are we doing this?
This is not on the agenda to be spoken about. If you wish to continue, we will have to suspend the meeting if that's what you want us to do. We are not in the public forum.
Well, Jeff said, Jeff read the information out.
We are not in the public forum, you can either choose. You can choose to adhere to the rules of this meeting or you can leave, please. Thank you. So the report, the update from the Great Thetford Partnership, 41123, the Great Thetford Partnership opposite is not in attendance. I don't believe she's sent anything through the next, Great Thetford Partnership meeting is in November, which we will have a feedback at the next meeting from that. So we're now on to 41223, the council usage of King's House, to discuss and decide whether or not the council shall end its usage of King's House with effect from the 1st of April 2024. I have lead the mayor and councillor Germany, councillor Germany, I believe this is your item you wish to be put on there, so I'll allow you to lead the item.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For many years, like many people, King's House has been the home of Thetford Town Council. For all of my life, it's all I've ever known as the base for council activities. The original home, if you like, of the council was very much the Guildhall. And if you look at the pictures hanging in King's House showing council meetings, it shows you the Guildhall, it shows you the large court. And indeed, the room off the large court is literally called the council chamber. So the historic home is very much the Guildhall, not King's House. I was always very passionate about King's House, I thought it was the natural home. But when the decision was taken some years ago to move town council staff out of King's House into the Carnegie. I think it made it very difficult for King's House to continue to be used. We as Thetford Town Council do not own King's House, it's owned by the Stanley Fourth Trust. And as a result, we pay rent of £10,000 a year in rent and about £12,000 a year in business rates. With other costs, I suspect it's probably more like £25,000 a year to use a building that we do not own. When we own Carnegie rooms, we own the Guildhall. My view would be that actually we should be making best use of council tax money. Let's not rent Stanley Fourth Building anymore, let's move whole hog, council chamber into the Guildhall. And redirect that money into other local projects. I would hope if we give sufficient notice that we do that from the 1st of April, so we make the decision tonight, that can be factored into the budget. And it gives Stanley Fourth Trust sufficient notice to either find another tenant or decide to do something different with that space. I want King's House to remain available and a key building in Thetford as it is at the moment. But for us as a town council, I think our base needs to be here at the Guildhall, here at the Carnegie. And it would save money and from a practical point of view, we wouldn't have to have our staff running between buildings. We would have facilities on hand to print or photocopy documents, which we can do here, but we can't at the Guildhall because we literally have no, at the King's House, because we literally have no facilities. So I'm content and I've run it through my own head a number of times. And whilst I am sad for us to be moving from King's House, I do think it's the best decision and I'm happy to propose that we do that as further wording of the agenda.
Councillor Blackborne and councillor Owen.
Yeah, as a new councillor, I, from the very outset, being a councillor here, I was amazed that we use, I was amazed that we use King's House at the cost. It's not disabled friendly, there's no access. It's a crazy building and really disappointed we continue to use it, I support that wholeheartedly.
Councillor Land?
We are a council now who believe in honouring manifesto commitments. And it was in the document unlocking Thetford's potential that we would move from King's House. We don't want to burden residents with the cost of, of, of more manifesto commitments, so savings elsewhere are crucial. By returning to our roots, and they are our roots, at the Guildhall, we achieve a double win in both terms of finance and of course heritage, which we speak about a lot. We can use the money saved to finance progress across the town and return to our roots, double win. Residents, in my view, should never have been asked to subsidise the cost of holding meetings in King's House. I've no idea what the reasons for that were, but we are where we are. In terms of space and provision for residents who wish to attend meetings, the Guildhall is a far better venue than King's House. Which is why it's routinely used for mayor making, I imagine. Equally, the small room, small hall next door is an ideal place for committee meetings, except for planning to take place, so that works. ideal place for committee meetings, except for planning to take place. So that works as well. I think overall, a move would solidify the council in terms of, the only word I can use is place, it situates it in one place. Because as councillor Jeremy mentioned, we wouldn't be dissipated across two sites as at present. So I'm very much in favour of a move.
I'm going to echo David as well, is I was very shocked to learn that we didn't own it in the first place. I was more shocked to learn exactly how much we pay for rent and business rates combined. I do understand the importance of King's House. I think that's going to be one of the issues that we come across is the idea of leaving it behind. But I know it is in good hands with the Stanley Fourth Trust, but I do think the public would have a very long list of things that we would rather spend £25,000 on a year than simply renting a room somewhere. And we have two alternative and suitable locations to use. I think it's probably the right thing to do, more than anything.
Mr McDonald.
I think in principle, I pretty much agree with everything you say. King's House, although it has great history, doesn't have good public access. It doesn't have the ability to have this large public forum. So for many reasons, it's not great. However, what I'm not really happy about is the way we're doing this. We're five months on from that manifesto. And five months on, the only thing we've got physically is 25 grand that we're paying out. Now, I'm not surprised by the 25 grand because, like all the rest of you, I am on the Stanley Fourth Trust. So I know what our liabilities are. What I am worried about is we're looking at the cost we're going to save from King's House. We haven't looked at the cost it's going to cost us to stop using parts of the Carnegie. Now, we already rent out parts of Carnegie and they're pretty well booked. Not only the Carnegie, but plenty of the other rooms. We haven't done that. We haven't worked out how much it's going to cost to do the move. And so for that reason, I think we're doing this as a kind of fatal complete. We're moving, don't care what it is. If that's the case, fine, let's not stop, let's stop talking about the 25 grand. What is it going to cost us and what is it going to look like once it's done? Are we permanently going to be on trestle tables? What's going to happen to all the history pieces that are in there? But Terry rightly mentioned that they are a part of the history, even though we started here first. They need to be displayed somewhere. And finally, don't forget that we do still have some attic space where various stuff's stored. So where's that going to go? What I'm saying is, in principle, great idea. Have we thought it through and what are we going to do at this end, rather than worrying about getting out of there first? So I would rather we thought about it first and come up with the figures from this end before we go into it. Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for those points. And I must say, as one of the new town councillors, it's sort of incumbent on me to have learned about the heritage of the town. I really appreciate the guidance from more senior councillors and other considerations. What I would say though, is my understanding is this motion moves it forward to the finance person able to start looking at those costs. And I think that's something that's most appropriate for me to do. I think it is certainly a concern that we're spending that much money and while there are practical considerations to be worked out, I think that is our next step that we do do. And then this is we move tomorrow, which is obviously not central. This essentially a gradual step towards, which I think to me makes perfect sense, both from a heritage angle to me, the Guildhall, I don't know, as someone who writes, it's the centre of the town, also as a state from a practical sense and certainly from staff's sense. So I respect those concerns. I think they're legitimate, but I think it doesn't stop us moving this fall tonight.
Answer then.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to allay some of your fears, councillor McDonald, I've already had conversations with officers about fittings and some of the trappings and we are discussing already ways of being able to move stuff. I know that doesn't allay your fears about it being a fatal complete, but it does mean that we are considering those things in advance of any potential move.
To Breton.
It makes special good sense to me in that respect. I can also share some of Mr McDonald's concerns, the history, the pieces on law, that all the just practicality of moving, all of that needs to be worked out. We're the council making the, making the decision to move. The other thing I wonder is, us as a collective, town council, a corporate with a, with a trusty of the Stanley Fourth, as both tenants and trustees, where would they leave us with them and are they fully aware of the transition? Where do you stand on that place?
Okay, councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I look at this from a slightly different point of view. When I first joined the council, we were lucky to have three people turn up in the public. We are now getting more and more open and more transparent. We want our residents to come and talk at the council meetings. We're only allowed 20 people in the King's House. Does that mean that the 21st person is not allowed to come in to make their point of view? No, I think we should come where we can have the residents. Everyone will be allowed in to give their point of view. The financial side, yeah, okay. But I was thinking more democracy and helplessly.
Turning for councillors which to speak. So I'll just come on, knowing to remain neutral, I will make a couple of points echoing some of the sentiments that councillor McDonald did. We do have the strong room there, the attic space that needs accommodating. We've got the pictures on the wall, but also there are some artefacts in the attic which need to be looked at and to be stored appropriately. It's not all Stanley Fourth stuff there, there's town council stuff up in the attic. The £12,000 on business rates, I'm astonished at that amount that is being there and I know it has been raised in the committee. So that's there. Acoustics in the Guildhall are not great and I would make that point, whether it be in the large hall or in the council chamber, the acoustics are not great. So I think if we do make that decision, then we do need to look at the acoustics to try and make meetings. Not everybody is blessed with perfect hearing and so I think to make things both transparent for public attending, but also for councillors to work together, they do need to hear what the other person's saying. And so I have reservations on that. But obviously, we have a proposal. Do we have a second, please? Councillor Blackburn to second. So the proposal is that we end the usage of King's House with effect from 1st of April 24. I am aware councillor Barretto's question about where do we stand with that. I can't answer that. So I don't believe we've got an agreement in place for any terms on that. So we would need to both look into legality of it and also, you know, make contact with the Stanley Fourth Trust to give them notice and also if, if they wish, as we all know, we sit as a corporate trustee on there, but there are independent trustees of certain trusts who would probably have to adjudicate or choose the way that they would wish to pursue this, if there's something not clear in terms of the legality of it all. So I think there are some more hoops to go through, but subject to those, are we happy to vote on this proposal and second over? Yep. So all those in favour of the proposal?
Very quickly, I can't make a vote until I have a defined answer on whether they'll leave us standing as legal. We are individuals, as a group, as a collective corporate trustees, I'd just like to get that part clarified. If it's very clear where we stand in essence, what links to want to stay there in one's intent and what's our responsibility to fly about on the decision. I'm not against moving in the savings. I'm just saying I'd like some clarity on that before making the decision.
Okay. I think the deciding, deciding principle is what we have as the wording here and I would take that as our motion tonight. So for those in favour of the motion, please. Those against? Abstentions? So then on to 41323, discuss any consultational media release required. Do we have any things we should make note of that we discussed so far? 41423 then, committee officers' update.
There's just two things. The town partners will be off until the 5th of November, just to the councillors know. And the second thing is that shortly, we've been following up on all the citizens training, so we'll do the second phase of that. Our target is to take that live at the centre panning site. So you'll be getting some emails in a few try to accommodate that. If you could try and attend to the extent possible, we will have that in place. That's it.
Okay. So we now move to 41523, the exclusion of present public. Consider resolving pursuant of the Public Bodies Amendment to Meetings Act 1960. Present public be excluded for any remaining idle business on grounds of publicity, be prejudicial to the public interest by reason and confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Are we happy to exclude the public?